Good morning. By the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. We will have payroll number three. Let's do the minutes first. Any alterations, corrections, entertaining motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Please. We're awake. Come on in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have ninety-nine inmates this morning for DOC and twenty-two or F six. The only I have is we've really lucked out last night. I figured we'd have a mess now four thirty-five when it started freezing rain. We didn't want to get too hard to bed.
Appreciate that.
Good day.
Good day. Right over to Josh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Last few weeks been off cutting brush, cutting a lot of dead ash trees and kind of lingered along. Going to continue to do that until the ground falls and we start our township stone. The wall jam at the White Bridge is cleaned out. It was interesting, but we got that cleaned out. Still doing a lot of auditing around the county on signs, changing out. We're going to change out a lot of our curve and speed limit signs like we spoke last meeting. We've also found that we had a lot of old inventory that the sign reflectivity wasn't correct for the new standards. So I talked to our sign manufacturer and rather than going and buying all new signs and having a ton of inventory scrapped, I talked to them about providing us just the laminate for them with the new standards. So we got in some samples, we tried them, Chris, our sign guy, tried that and everything looks pretty good to where we can now take the signs that are in inventory, brand new, but not to the current standards and slap the adhesive that is our standard on it for like twenty-five percent of the cost of a actual new sign. So we're going to do a lot of that rather than purchase all new signs, reuse the ones that are there and brand new and no good basically. So that's something that was pretty exciting to save some money. I'd like to get some approval if you look at the second sheet for to get our, we've talked about it several times. We've got some quotes from Stoops, Selking and Rush Truck on a single axle dump truck as well as the outfit, which is the body, the underbody, the front plow, the strobe lights, yada, yada on that. And I would like for you guys to consider and approve me going with Stoops for the chassis and Klyde Truck for the outfit. They're the low bidder on the package as well as the preferred of both chassis and outfit. That would be my choice, those two, as well as being a low bidder. So it was a kind of a two for, two for one type of.
Mr. President, I'm going to recuse myself since I'm gainfully employed by Stoops.
Noted. No second. Okay. Very good.
Last but not least, just my normal. I always leave it on here thanks to my guys. I can't say it enough for holidays, weekends, all the things they do to keep everybody safe. Can't do it without them. I just appreciate them every day. That's it?
As do we. We appreciate you, Josh.
All right.
Thank you.
Can you put the laminate only on a new sign in inventory or can you take one that's top line that's faded? You can't even see it.
It would just depend upon the condition of the sign. You know, most of the ones that, you know, as we go through an audit in inventory, yes, of course, now that I know that we can do this, we will for sure. But a lot of times when we're auditing them out, they're either old steel signs that we wouldn't want to reco or they're bent or have a bullet hole in them or something. But for sure, Roy, that's a great question. If they are a good sign, just out of date, we could definitely reco. We'll be doing that a lot more, you know, just because that's dollars and cents that we can say.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Josh, I'm still getting a lot of compliments on the roads too.
All right. Good, good. Appreciate that. We'll be back at it tonight. Yep.
Okay, Nate, have a nice.
Good morning. I've got a few different papers here to look at, so I'll do some up and down, any news and documents. Start with Bridge one forty-two. Actually, I have three different documents for you to look at. And I'll start one. I have a contract proposal from Engineering Resources Inc. to do construction inspection for us on that bridge. It'd be kind of on call services. They provided me a proposal of not to exceed ten thousand dollars for inspection of that project once that proceeds. I had another proposal from another firm, but they weren't willing to go for less than twenty thousand dollars for that. I have some other possible items I can add here. Sign. I'm going to jump to a couple of items. I'm not sure if you want to do this one motion then.
You need, how many signatures?
Uh, I just need one.
Likes?
Likes.
Motion approved with the president signing.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
Next item, I have a contract from Indoc. It's an amendment to our previous community crossings that will give us the award of fifty percent award towards the Zanesville project. All signatures are just mine. I believe it has all of your signatures on that one.
This isn't, are we calling this a community crossings grant?
Yeah, it's actually an amendment number one. So it's Little Woods Bridges Management Agreement Amendment.
To the twenty sixteen.
And it will be signed by, actually just signed by Blake and then Beth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Got three copies of that. With that, I just let out here the agreement with HIS Constructors for the Zanesville Bridge.
So once I have that signature, then I send this agreement to them and then they can start doing some more. And that's actually signed by all three of the commissioners. And then this for the total of, I did not, approximately four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
That was in the amendment.
Four hundred and nineteen, five fifty-six. Sixty. Yep. So that was the agreement from HIS.
So that was approved?
That was approved.
We approved it.
Previously, we were just to sign the contract until the award numbers came from the state.
So we can sign it afterwards?
Sign it afterwards. So. Sorry. I want to give them all to you as one big pile, but assumed it would get confusing. It certainly is for me to make sure I got these all lined up. So with that, I'll send that off and hopefully we can set a start date on that bridge for Zanesville. So all the paperwork, we've just been waiting on that the last two weeks, so that gets in a lot of the way. Jump to the next item on the list, Bridge eighteen. That's our bridge on seven fifty east, south of two eighteen. The, all the footers are cut at this point. Unfortunately, it's gotten very cold now, so I've got a lot of ice in the excavation. So hopefully we'll get a little warm snapping in and then they'll be able to pour the footers and set that structure. So that's moving along. It was ahead of schedule last week. We'll see where we're at by the next meeting. I think we're going to lose a little bit of power. Next item here, Hoosier Highway. That's actually a geotechnical proposal I have. I submitted requests for proposals from Alton Witzig and GME Testing. But what did came from GME Testing to do soil sampling. Their cost for that was three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Alton Witzig's proposal was for eight thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. So I'd like to recommend that we proceed doing soil testing on that project area through P and GME.
Motion to approve.
Seconds.
On favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
And it just needs one signature on that. So, a quick update on the Wells County corridors. That state request, notice intent was sent out. I received four statements of qualification from qualifying consulting engineering firms. I have those here with me. And in addition to two letters from other firms that were not, that were invited, but were not able to put together full letter of intent. So I'd like to, at the end of the meeting, we can review some of those, put some scores together and then I'll be able to move forward with selecting the time frame to be safe. So, just a quick update on that. And just an F one I, there were a number of driveway and access requests coming from B D for some transmission line reconstruction from Liberty Center of West, West County and East and West County. So I've reviewed and approved those in terms of, so, other than that, just a quick business update and a lot of people working to get cleaned up. So I'm going to get that out of the way.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up.
I've got the seven right of ways for minor subdivisions from Mary Plan. They require the applicant to grant to the county a right of way to ensure that there's adequate access to the property. So, I guess, seven of those.
Motion to accept the seven right of way.
Seconds.
On favor?
Aye.
I'll check. Sorry. How you doing?
Hi.
Good. Looks like trimmed out. You look good. It looks good.
I wanted to bring to you our annual report highlighting the, what has happened throughout two thousand seventeen. First couple pages, the glossary of the council and a little bit of information, kind of start with the key activities. Under business expansion retention, conducted an excess of one hundred and twenty-five visits with our local manufacturers. It's a number we hadn't really been keeping track of. We were keeping track specifically of BRE visits, but in discussing it with our ED council, we're going to start tracking every time that we actually do visit an industry so they know how much contact we're having. So, our workforce development, we did facilitate a training program for CNC class, two different ones that happened here within Wells County. There were twenty-two total participants that received national certification from those programs. Industrial attraction site leads, we did receive forty-two site leads. We submitted twelve responses with qualified sites and we finalized the one industrial attraction project, which was twenty twenty. Collaboration and networking, continued to work with local elected leaders, civic leaders, education leaders, and then throughout this last year to work on the housing and growth assessment. We formed a partnership with Adams County and obtained the two hundred and fifty thousand workforce development training grant that we have already started classes for. We have three classes. We have two currently running and one that starts tomorrow. So there's one in industrial maintenance that started right before the beginning of the year. And then there's one, leadership and supervision class going on over in Adams County right now. We started leadership and supervision class here in Wells County tomorrow. So I think we have a total Wells County participants, about eighteen between the three classes. Our revolving loan fund through a USDA rural business enterprise grant, we awarded forty-three thousand dollars last year to two different companies, ABC Stan Studio and Two D's Consulting. One of the, throughout the year, we have been working with our schools to introduce our students to manufacturing opportunities, the different levels of manufacturing opportunities, not just production work here, but the different engineering opportunities and finance and those types of things. But one of the things that we did participate in is Manufacturing Day two thousand seventeen. We had about fifty students from each of the three school districts that visited a number of manufacturers. Remke Manufacturing and Rathkeff and Ossian, Dedrick Tool, twenty twenty, Custom Motor Plastics, Alexson, Bluffton Motorworks, Pretzels and American Axle Manufacturing. It's the most we've had actually of industry that have kind of come up and said, yeah, we want to be involved in that. So, and more of them have indicated they want to be involved next year. So the kids had a great time. So onto our economic investment for the year. We had sixty-three point five million dollars of new investment that was committed. And this is essentially from abatement filings or the notices from our companies through state projects such as twenty twenty. Twenty twenty's commitment again was twenty-seven million dollars to, for their, for their project, which we look at and figure it's actually probably going to be quite substantially more than that when they're done. So resulted in two hundred and three additional jobs, additional jobs that are committed and six point eight million dollars of new payroll. And then there's a list of the companies and what those investments were throughout two thousand seventeen. Most notable again, twenty twenty with their purchase of the Buckhorn facility, Burn Apparel that's adding sixty thousand square feet to their facility and Onco Steel, it's also adding, they're raising the roof on their facility to facilitate a new machine that they're bringing in. Our workforce rates, you'll see that on the top left, we did drop just slightly in average employment numbers, the number of people employed. But one of the things that we continuously seem to decline in is the number of unemployed. That number, even though we had an uptick of employment percentages, our annual rate of unemployed individuals still continues to decline. We did finish out two thousand seventeen in December with a two point seven percent unemployment rate, which some would say is good, but all of our companies will say is very bad. So we need more people. And as you also see in from our unemployment, while we did have two plant closure announcements, it really didn't have an effect on our unemployment that much. We still remained well under the state and national averages. One of the things added to this year's report is our per capita income. You'll see over the last five years, two thousand sixteen's the last one that's been reported as of this date, we've increased per capita income by nearly five thousand dollars per year, or five thousand dollars total. We, we're increasing, essentially circulating in northeast Indiana's economy increased about six hundred and thirteen million compared to two thousand fifteen, which is about a seven hundred and eighty-eight dollar per person increase. And that's, that's throughout the region itself. The next, one of the things that we're really starting to pay closely attention to is the domestic migration and population change, especially given the change in need for more people. And what I wanted to show was kind of the last five years worth of population change so you can kind of see where people are coming and going. You'll see that essentially the only reason why Wells County has increased in populations is because we've had more births versus deaths. Our domestic migration still is, has, in two thousand twelve, we've lost a lot of people that moved outside of the county and we haven't made up from that. Seventy-three in two thousand thirteen, seventy-four in two thousand sixteen, and just a few that stayed and increased and not stayed, but we increased a few in fourteen and fifteen. So where, while we're birthing them here and raising them here, we're losing them and that's, that's becoming a problem. So we have to, we have to work on ways that we can start keeping people within the community. Wells County recorded new business names. This is essentially from the recorder's office. There is information through the, where people actually have to file this with the state of Indiana. However, obtaining that per year is very difficult. They only list it by community, the actual city, and you get a whole list. You don't, you're not able to see what's new throughout each year. So I'm trying to see if I can get in contact with them to see if they track that on a per year basis to get some better numbers. But you'll see that just what's been filed here locally, there's, there's been a decrease from two thousand fifteen. And so we're going to be working on some educational sessions on how people start a business and properly file that business information. So, so projects as we go into two thousand eighteen, taking the information and the implementation steps from the housing assessment and growth study and working towards those. We did hold a meeting here about two weeks ago. Got some really good input from the community and we're going to continue some of those meetings and then also put a survey out to the community to kind of get a better understanding of where the community, where people in the community think we need to grow and how we need to grow. Working on developing the marketing materials to promote Wells County for talent and business attraction. We're working hopefully to hire an intern this summer through our partnership with Manchester that will be, have a strong background in graphic design to be able to put together a lot of materials that we can use for promotion. Working on increasing opportunities for internships for high school and college students. Currently working with the high schools right now to put together an internship fair here in the next few months so we can introduce high school students to other opportunities that maybe they're not aware of in ICE and internship programs. Working on putting together a marketing campaign to also invite freshmen and sophomores that left our schools to bring them back for internship opportunities. A lot of them come back for summer jobs, but we want to try and get them into more of a career field that they're working on in hopes that they'll then continue into their junior and senior and then come back after graduation. Facilitating the training program with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant we received from O C R A. Conducting an analysis to identify Wells County's, to identify Wells County's identity and promote quality of place towards increasing population tourism opportunities and economic growth. Yes, Governor, I'm going to come and ask you for money at some point, but I want you to know when. Some other things, again, keeping up our BRE, our business attraction, or our business retention and expansion visits with our local companies. Working on making sure that our sites are currently the way that companies are going to want them to be when they're looking at our sites. So our, not only our buildings, but our properties, making sure that they, they match what the companies are looking for to make it easy. While we're focusing heavily on the growth and the population and need for people, we certainly can't stop on the, on the business and attraction opportunities. The next page again, just talks about in more in depth on some of the projects that we're working on this year. And the last page, we want to thank our investors, not only our communities like you guys that helped us with our budget, but then we have a number of local businesses that are providing some additional funding as well that allow us to get some of these projects like the housing study and some of these things. Any questions?
Chad, how do we compare? I know years ago, Wells County was fairly high on the per capita income. How are we doing? I mean, I'm going to go back ten to fifteen years ago. We were at, I think at a peak versus like an eleven county area.
Well, the, the numbers that I've indicated here are Wells County.
Right. But when we compared that to other counties around, Wells County was, was high.
Yeah. So if you look at our annual average household wages, they're, they are high.
Okay.
Per capita, we're pretty, we stay, we're pretty much on that. I can give you the list over the last five years for every county.
So then is it?
Is there an average of all the counties together?
Yes.
Do you want to show what that is?
I, I have that information with me. So, yep, for the eleven counties, yes. Our household income is pretty high. When you look at data in regards to our annual, our average manufacturing wages, they're pretty high as well.
Okay.
To most counties. So I, and I think some of that attributes to, we've got a lot of local companies here and so a lot of locally owned companies. So some of the, I think the president CEOs of those companies are kind of driving the average up a little bit.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it. There we are.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to start with a packet of information that I handed out to everybody. The first graph that you see, we just like to kind of give you an idea of how busy our drivers and dispatchers are. So it shows the average number of trips per business day for each year. So in two thousand seventeen, we actually averaged a hundred and fifty-nine trips per business day. We've had days that have gone over two hundred plus and then we of course have some days that are lower. So that's how we ended up with that average of a hundred and fifty-nine trips per business day. The next graph is our senior ridership. I thought it was interesting that we stayed even with last year's number of seniors that we serviced. We do get new seniors all the time adding to our clientele, but we also lose some unfortunately. So that number has stayed consistent the last couple of years. Excuse me. The annual data layout that I gave you, I think this is a good one to look at because it shows our total trips for the year. It was at thirty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-nine. So we're almost at that forty thousand mark. So we're doing a lot of trips. We traveled a hundred and ninety-seven and nine hundred and eighty-eight miles, our vehicles did, throughout two thousand seventeen. Our gallons of gas, fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five, that equaled out to be an average of miles per gallon for, at twelve point four three. Our total gas cost, you can see, was pretty close to last year's gas cost at thirty-seven two four seven, averaging at two thirty-four gallon. The last time we were here, Tamara asked us for some different types of information. So I did go back to our database and work with the criteria that she asked for. One of the things that she asked for was the number of trips in each area. So in two thousand seventeen, I think I might have those in a different order. Sorry. It's the second, second one down. In two thousand seventeen, the trips in the different areas, out of county, we had three hundred and twenty-five per trip. And those are to Fort Wayne, Huntington, Decatur, anywhere within fifty miles of our base. And those are primarily medical appointments that we take our Wells County residents to. Okay. Within the county, but not within the city limits, we had twelve thousand forty-one trips. And then within the city limits, we've had twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-three. What I like to look at is the fact that even though we have city versus county, it's all Wells County residents that are using the service and taking those trips. The next graph that I want to look at is the two thousand seventeen miles in each area. That was something else that Tamara had asked. So in the, out of county, that being the smallest, with the number of trips also is the smallest in the number of miles. But we did travel ten thousand four hundred and thirty-nine miles outside of Wells County. But again, that's taken our Wells County residents to their appointments that they need and have no other way to get to. Inside the county, a hundred and eight thousand ninety-seven miles. And then inside the city limits, seventy thousand three hundred and thirty miles. Okay? And then.
Right. But when we compared that to other counties around, Wells County was, was high.
Yeah, so if you look at our annual average household wages, they're, they are high.
Okay.
Per capita, we're pretty, we stay, we're pretty much on that. And I can give you the list over the last five years for every county.
So then is it?
Yes. I have that information with me, so, yep, for the 11 counties, yes. Our household income is pretty high. When you look at data in regards to our annual, our average manufacturing wages, they're pretty high as well.
Okay.
To most counties. So, and I think some of that attributes to, we've got a lot of local companies here. And so a lot of locally owned companies, so some of the, I think the president CEOs of those companies are kind of driving the average up a little bit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. There we are.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to start with a packet of information that I handed out to everybody. The first graph that you see, we just like to kind of give you an idea of how busy our drivers and dispatchers are. So it shows the average number of trips per business day for each year. So in 2017, we actually averaged 159 trips per business day. We've had days that have gone over 200 plus, and then we of course have some days that are lower. So that's how we ended up with that average of 159 trips per business day. The next graph is our senior ridership. I thought it was interesting that we stayed even with last year's number of seniors that we serviced. We do get new seniors all the time adding to our clientele, but we also lose some unfortunately. So that number has stayed consistent the last couple of years. Excuse me. The annual data layout that I gave you, I think this is a good one to look at because it shows our total trips for the year. It was at 39,559. So we're almost at that 40,000 mark. So we're doing a lot of trips. We traveled 197 and 988 miles, our vehicles did, throughout 2017. Our gallons of gas, 15,925, that equaled out to be an average of miles per gallon for, at 12.43. Our total gas cost, you can see, was pretty close to last year's gas cost at 37,247, averaging at 234 a gallon. The last time we were here, Tamara asked us for some different types of information. So I did go back to our database and work with the criteria that she asked for. One of the things that she asked for was the number of trips in each area. So in 2017, I think I might have those in a different order. Sorry. It's the second, second one down. In 2017, the trips in the different areas, out of county, we had 325 per trip. And those are to Fort Wayne, Huntington, Decatur, anywhere within 50 miles of our base. And those are primarily medical appointments that we take our Wells County residents to. Okay? Within the county, but not within the city limits, we had 12,041 trips. And then within the city limits, we've had 27,193. What I like to look at is the fact that even though we have city versus county, it's all Wells County residents that are using the service and taking those trips. The next graph that I want to look at is the 2017 miles in each area. That was something else that Tamara had asked. So in the, out of county, that being the smallest, with the number of trips also is the smallest in the number of miles. But we did travel 10,439 miles outside of Wells County. But again, that's taken our Wells County residents to their appointments that they need and have no other way to get to. Inside the county, 108,097 miles. And then inside the city limits, 70,330 miles. And then I just thought this was interesting to give you an average miles per trip. This wasn't something that Tamara asked for, but in the city, obviously, without our city limits, our average mile per trip is three miles. Okay? In the county, our average mile per trip is nine. And then out of county, it averaged to be 32, even though we go sometimes up to that 50 mile limit that we have by insurance. The last thing that Tamara had asked for was trips by zip code. And unfortunately, my trip table doesn't capture the zip code. Plus, I didn't really feel like that was going to give us a good idea of, or portray a picture that was real accurate because there's a lot of people that live in the county that have the 46714 zip code of the city. So.
Right.
Okay? Any questions?
No. Appreciate seeing that, thank you.
Looks like the last five years gives you a fairly good indicator of where you're going to be.
I think so. At the 10-year mark, that was our peak. And then the last couple of years, we've been staying really close to that.
Yeah, with a couple spikes here and there.
Couple spikes.
But, yeah.
Our, some of our vans actually leave a little bit before six because people have to be there by six. So we're really kind of stretching our limits there to get people to work and then get back home again.
Very good. Appreciate the information, so you probably need a signature, right?
Yes.
Motion to have the president sign.
Mine is black today, so.
I got blue. It's blue. Watch this. Oh, yeah. I knew they were coming in today. I know. Sometimes I prepare. Surprised you didn't.
You did.
I know.
Identical otherwise.
I do that all the time at home. Look at what's that, it's wrong. I like that breakdown. It's a good. Yeah, I like to see that. Very interesting. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Cune Bridge Fund. Beth, myself, Council President Todd, Monis Smith, and Mike, Los Angeles Vice President Met in a session with, last Thursday. I had brought up the bridges and different items at the January County Council meeting. And they wanted to pursue and look into how a Cune Bridge Fund would affect the budget. And Beth provided quite a bit of information. So I'm going to briefly discuss it and I'm sure I'm going to hack it up, so you take over. It's going to be a net tax wash, so it's not like there'd be a tax increase. However, different people will have to pay a small percentage more. Back in 2008 and 2009, the property taxes, those people that own their own home were given a substantial reduction in property taxes. And help me out so I don't butcher it up. Homestead supplemental.
Through the homestead property tax credit.
Homestead property tax credit.
Well, it's actually just called a property tax credit, but we give the majority of it to the homesteads.
Right. At the time, and I think it's been the same since, we gave four tenths of a percent discount over and above your also homestead supplemental credit.
Your homestead credit plus your supplemental credit, and then this was an additional.
This was an additional. So, long story short, property individuals have been receiving a substantial tax reduction. So we don't want to eliminate it. We would like to take it from 0.4% to 0.3%. And that small percentage of the entire homesteads in the county would generate, I would say 400,000, give or take.
Six hundred, roughly just over 600,000.
Really?
For the whole county.
For the entire county?
Yes.
But out of that share, each of the municipalities will get their share, correct?
Depends on what bucket we put it in, but yes.
So that would generate monies for Bluffton and Ossian and Uniondale, Veracruz, Nido.
Seems so.
And Zanesville.
So that would be expected to use there. Yes, any incorporated account.
Right. This would take the burden of the Cune Bridge similar to what we have in Zanesville because technically Bridge 142 is three fourths inside the city limits of Zanesville. And we were trying to work on a plan, but with a Cune Bridge Fund, it would be all the county since they all contribute into it then. So that money would be set aside. So we would not change the income tax rate at all. And describe the public safety portion of where that money goes.
Yep. We have a local income tax rate of 2.1% for the county, at Wells County. So depending on the 2.1%, 0.4% of that goes to the property tax credits like he was talking to. So if we decreased the rate that went to the property tax credit and increased to the, well, they changed all the names of all the funds here. Expenditure lit credit, or expenditure lit amount, it would not change the income tax rate that Wells County residents pay. It's still going to be 2.1%, but it's just going to give less money that goes into a property tax credit and put more money into the expenditure rate. So depending on where we put the money in the expenditure rate, it either goes to certified shares, public safety, or it can go to special funds, which we don't have any of those. So what we're looking at when we talk is most likely, you know, taking, if we decreased, you know, 0.1% from the property tax credit or the, you know, property tax credit rate, and then increasing our expenditure rate to 0.1, or increasing, putting that into that, that if you put it into public safety, then we would generate roughly 600, a little over 600,000 dollars that could go into public safety. Now, public safety is to go to all the town, or the county and all the municipalities in the county. Okay, so roughly Wells County, and these are very rough numbers because we're just kind of taking what it would take and put it in there. Roughly Wells County unit of government would receive about 358, you know, or 359,000 of that money. If that's what we did, if we took that 1% and took it away from the property tax credit and put it into the public safety part of the expenditure rate, then that's what, and roughly Bluffton would be around 194,000. So those are very rough numbers, you know, so they're not exact numbers whatsoever because we get that information from the Department of Local Government Finance and.
But my question is, out of that money that goes to Bluffton, do they get to choose how to spend it on their public safety? Or if we have a bridge inside the city limit, is that something that they'll have to do or?
The public safety would be only public safety, so you could not put it on a bridge.
That wouldn't be on the bridge at all. So you're talking two different funds going into the 1%.
Yeah, so the bridge, the Cune Bridge Fund would be separately switched. Yeah.
And the public safety is the what?
Lit, there's no more low it, it's called lit, yeah, yeah. So, but it would just be into that bucket of our lit.
Yeah, what we're normally accustomed to has changed just recently, so.
Yes, two years ago.
Explain it better than I can.
Yeah, it is kind of complicated, but you know, it's just roughly, you know, right currently of our 0.4% of our income tax rate, 2.4 million dollars is what we collect that gets put on property tax credits for homeowners. So we would just be.
And we have to understand that '08 and '09, we were going through a big depression or recession or whatever, things have turned. Even though whatever the market does today, but it does make a difference that things have turned better. And we really foresee, I'm not sure exactly, I should have looked at the chart. Not very many counties even offer this, and if they do, it's a much lower percentage of a discount. Like, my, I can use an example. My, my son-in-law in Tiptid Canoe County has roughly the same size of home as my son-in-law here in Wells County. And it's almost a thousand dollars difference, 1,800 to 800. That's, and they get a one tenth of 1%. We're giving four tenths. So that is a difference, substantial difference. We have houses in Littleburg that are half the price they were 20 years ago. It's just a lot of money that's up there that's getting benefits back to the property, which is fine. But at some point, things don't cost the same they did 20 years ago to maintain for our county, so.
Beth, do you understand that of all the taxation that's set forth generally by the county councils, that the county commissioners are the only ones that make a decision on this Cune Bridge Fund?
Exactly, and that's why we brought in.
Only one the commissioners have.
Well, that and the Cune Cap, we don't have.
Right.
Right, Cune Cap, which we don't have.
Yeah.
And that's why we're one of two counties, or one, maybe the only county that has a happier. And that's why we're trying to figure out taking.
And that's why we brought in the county council, because the county council is the unit of our board that would make all the decisions on the lit, you know, anything to do with the income tax credits. So with the commissioners, if the commissioners would opt to put in or adopt a Cune Bridge Fund, that ultimately would take money, well, it's part of the max levy. So that levy amount would take levy down from our general fund that the county council are accustomed to. So, so doing that, that's why we was looking for different ways to generate money to make up, you know, what we would need for a budget. And so that's why we discussed, you know, the county council. So it's two, two boards that would make them two different decisions, you know. If they opt to put a Cune Bridge Fund in, most likely the county council will opt to make some changes in the lit, the way they, you know, distribute lit. No property, or no income tax credit will change whatsoever, you know, because we're not increasing. It is increasing one part of it, but decreasing the other part of it for the exact same amount. So the income tax rate would not change for Wells County residents at all.
Well, the bottom line is, unless we do something, we're going backwards. It's the, the reality of the whole situation is nobody wants any taxes raised, but everybody wants something done for what they drive on. And after doing this for so long, small incremental steps, and the way they've talked about doing this with the Cune Bridge Fund, keeping it minimal, you, like Beth said, you're going to take one from the other and equalize it, but at least have a fund that we can go to to be able to work with instead of no fund. And, and I know everywhere I go around the state, when you mention you don't have a Cune Bridge Fund, they look at you like a three-headed goat because everyone has it and we don't.
The couple of ones that don't, they have Riverboat Casino.
Yes, there's, there's other options.
So they get seven, eight hundred thousand dollars from that, and that's what they dictate for their bridges. We don't have that, we just don't have that option.
We have a river.
We have a river.
And then one thing, you know, too, is if you do a Cune Bridge Fund, you know, the funds is only used for bridge repair, maintenance, or replacement. It can't be used for any other purpose. It only used for those purposes by statute, it's the same thing. And it's the same thing for a public safety fund. If we, if, if the council decides to make any changes and they, you know, make the changes and put it into the public safety fund, it's specific for what areas that money can be used for, it's public safety, so.
You sent a public, or you sent something you've gotten from the state on maximum tax levies or whatever, the whole state, you see all the counties. I looked at all the counties, Adams County, Jay County, Blackford County, Huntington. All Wells County had was a Cune Fund for, or a fund for the 4H.
Yeah, we have a tax rate for 4H.
Yeah. All the rest had courthouse.
Cune funds, yeah.
Cune Bridge Run, capital improvement fund. So we're surrounded by it. Right. That's what other counties around us are doing and we don't, we're not using those methods. That's why our rate is as low as it is. But if you don't have the rate and you don't have the income, we can't do the things that need to be done. As Nate can attest, we have bridges that right now, we just don't have the funds in the, in the long range. And we'll find out in about two months, three months, when our bridge inspection report comes back where we're at. And that could really send us further, I'm not sure. I think it's wise to make decisions that put us in a path that we are trying to do something, want to do something, so. Let's see what the council. So we present the rate we want for the Cune Bridge Fund? Or can we just, you work a number up and then whatever that percentage comes up? Because it, we set initial rate, and at that rate, you said 358 or 85?
358, yeah, yes. If we, if the council made that change, that's what we generate in public safety.
So what rate would that be as a Cune Bridge rate? Do we know?
Well.
2%, 3% maybe?
Yeah. What do we say, like 2% was maybe going to bring in roughly 400,000?
Yeah.
So, so we would get some more accurate numbers when we have our public hearing.
Right, but we just want the public to know if there's comments or questions, anything. Beth is going to be the most well-versed, but if you have any comments or questions, us county commissioners would be delighted, you know, either take your questions in, get you an answer at some point in time, so. I'll probably be out tomorrow night's council meeting and try to answer questions too, so.
And I will work with Roy and we'll probably, because any changes that we need to be done to go into effect for 2019, we have to have it adopted before May the 1st. So it's something that we would move on quickly. So we probably would be having a public hearing later this month, possibly even so. And looking, or having it set, to have our public hearing at your next council, or your first council or commissioners meeting in March, most likely. So that way we have time to have public comment and make decisions.
Okay. Other monthly reports or business?
I just got from Roy with the recorders, is that anything we're wanting to do now or is that wait until the next meeting?
I don't know, she just sent it to me saying.
Well, she's not here, so we just wait till the next meeting in case you, in case anybody has counsel.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, we'll just do that.
Anyway, she had, the recorder has something you've already passed last year. The ordinance establishing procedures for bulk sale copies. And what, what she has in mind and what the statute now allows you to do is to watermark those copies. So, I mean, you might have seen on the internet, somebody says, well, you need, you need a copy of your deed. So for $150, we'll get you a copy of your deed, which, you know, you can get one for a dollar a page at the Recorder's Office. So it is designed to prevent bulk sale users from buying county documents in bulk and then reselling it. So what the ordinance is going to do is just amend what you passed last year. It's not going to even change the, the cost that would, what she sells the bulk sales, but just that it requires, the commissioners would require her to watermark it. And the watermark would contain this is sold to ABC title and it's only for their purposes, it can't be resold. So she's not on the agenda, but that's.
Is there any cost to the ability to do the watermark?
Sorry?
Is there any cost to the ability to do a watermark and what's that entail technically?
Uh, just like the minutes you get from the drainage board, you know, she's got, Diana says it's got draft. Yeah, it's just a little gray thing across it, so you can still.
They don't, if it goes to public safety, because the public safety only goes to municipalities. They don't get it now. They don't get any public safety money now.
I don't have anything further.
So moved.
Second.
Are you guys going to adjourn or you can't leave on the score your stuff?
Do you have to do that before you adjourn? Okay, then, unadjoined.
Unadjoined, so you get down for scoring, and then you'll adjourn.
So, the meeting's over. We're adjourning, or we're just going to score stuff now, okay? Say, "I watch." Don't leave, Chad, come on.